I don't regret it.
I know, I probably did.
I know, but I think we'll be fine.
Good to see you too.
What was the project selection? Do you want me to come on the list again? What do you want to do? I mean, it's totally clear I would come with you. Why don't you come?
No, not here, I know.
I'll be with you.
No. I'm just worried that they're gonna ask questions.
And you're right, because there is a conversation where you're like, oh, this woman.
I really don't know.
I would be.
I don't mind.
I'm talking to my friends.
This one you just said. Oh, I do have to.
Oh, no, no, I don't want to know.
Yeah, that's the kind of thing.
Yeah, okay. Or. This may have self-destructed.
All right. For sure. I haven't thought, I did ask her, like, is it possible that she hasn't had any of the future cases that you don't want to have? You don't necessarily have selections out. So. That's it? Requesting. I know.
Well, that probably will be.
Okay.
We have users.
And people will ask their name.
Probably. That's another reason why she has. Yeah.
And, well, that's a tradition. I know, like, then seven is, well, actually, eight is. Seven is three.
Seven is, well.
Well, I should say this was, was.
You hate it.
We speak today, yeah. We speak today. How are your kids?
Yeah.
Her kids, you know. I mean, I was.
I hate right now.
Because they were.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I hear from them.
Yeah.
Yeah, unless there's something else, like, between, like, yeah.
Yeah.
Like, okay.
Yeah.
Uh. What's that? What's it? Yeah, well, I just want to go on the top.
Because he goes.
Yeah, so I'll just put it down. Yeah, that's all I need. They think it's. But I wear. I can also. Yeah, I can. I know. H O L.
Does Horizon notify?
Yeah.
I'll see him.
You got to start as a junior. I don't know. I don't know. Is it you? Oh, no. You don't. I just wanted to, like, you know. Yeah.
He would.
Yeah.
It's so annoying.
I think somebody wants to talk about that.
Morning. Who else? Anyone else?
Did you have probation?
Anyone else? Okay.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Ask you to please rise for opening prayer and pledge allegiance before we convene the commissary public meeting. Dear gracious and loving God, we thank you this morning for your goodness and blessings over all of us. We're thankful you provide us hope when we're faced with challenges. You provide us the strength to endure during those times. Thankful that you're always with us and shower us with your love and mercy. Renew our spirits each day with your joy and peace. May we work together in unity and for your glory. Lord, on Saturday, the army chaplains will celebrate its birthday that was authorized by the Continental Congress in seventeen seventy-five. We thank you for leading them into a life of service for God and country. And Father, we ask you to guide us in our meeting this morning. May your decisions be in accordance with your will today and always. He sees, we humbly pray. In your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in its own name. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will convene the commissary's public meeting this time and ask for approval of the minutes of previous meetings. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Public comment on ten items only at this time.
I've got one. Jacob, stop first.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to reports.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Presented for your ratification are invoices due through August second, twenty twenty-three, to be paid on July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of three million, three hundred twenty-two thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-two cents. The breakdown is as follows, with nineteen point nine four percent being funded by the general fund at six hundred sixty-two thousand, four hundred ten dollars and thirty-eight cents. Point four five percent is being funded by ARPA grants at fifteen thousand dollars. Two point one three percent is being funded by Act thirteen grants at seventy thousand, eight hundred fourteen dollars and forty cents. Sixty-nine point eight seven percent is being funded by other grants and pass-through monies at two million, three hundred twenty-one thousand, six hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventy cents. Seven point two nine percent is being funded by RMS at two hundred forty-two thousand, three hundred seventy-two dollars and forty-nine cents. And point three one percent is being funded by escrow at ten thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars and eighty-five cents.
Okay, and a motion?
I move to approve.
I'll start again.
Any comments or questions? All fair side?
Aye.
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 So carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to confirmation. Tony Collins, review projects for the FY twenty-three community development live grant funds.
Morning.
Morning, commissioners. Good morning, everyone. My name is Tony Collins. I'm here with Cita Cog to review the projects that we have for the twenty twenty-three CDVG allocations. The county allocation for this year is two hundred seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred forty-seven dollars. Jersey Shore Borough's allocation is ninety-six thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars. Montoursville Borough is one hundred two thousand, nine hundred two dollars. And South Williamsport Borough is one hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred thirty dollars for a total combined amount of five hundred ninety-seven, seven hundred seventy-seven dollars, five hundred ninety-seven thousand, excuse me, seven hundred seventy dollars. Our project evaluation criteria is eligibility and fundability, keeping in mind that there are three national objectives that the projects have to meet. One of those, either low to moderate income persons, slum or blight, or urgent need. The projects are also evaluated on timeliness, whether they can meet the contract deadline, financial need, fair share when applicable. We have a few projects that do have fair share, and attendance at the workshop and the first public hearing. The projects that are being proposed for this year are, the first one there is Lycoming County Water and Sewer. This is for State Route forty-four water main reconstruction. The project cost is at one point two million. CDVG request is two hundred seven thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars. This project does have twenty-two, twenty twenty-two funding in it, CDVG at one hundred twelve thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollars. It also has three hundred eighty thousand dollars of ARPA funds. And they applied for the competitive county ARPA in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. That has not been awarded yet. If it is awarded for this project, there will be a balance of the two hundred seven thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars, which, if awarded the twenty twenty-three CDVG funding, that would be a fully funded project then. This is for the replacement of the water main and the meter pits along Route forty-four in Limestone Township. The second applicant is the Muncie Borough. This is for accessibility upgrades to the Muncie Borough building. The project cost is fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. CDVG request is sixty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars, the difference there being the environmental review and compliance fees, which comes from the grant, not from general funds. This is for the removal of architectural barriers at the Muncie Borough building. There are steps in the front and the back that they'd like to replace with ramps, also including some curb cuts there as well. They had included some sidewalk repairs in it. However, sidewalks are not removal of architectural barriers, so that piece would have to be removed from the project. And that has an estimated fourteen weeks of construction. The third applicant is Roads to Freedom, the Center for Independent Living. This is for a flooring replacement project. They want, would like to replace the carpet with hard flooring, so to improve the air quality in the center. It has a project cost of one hundred twenty-three thousand, two hundred ninety-seven dollars, and a CDVG request of sixty-four thousand, eighty-nine dollars. This is a fair share project, so fair share applies at fifty-one point nine eight percent that the county can contribute to the project. The Center for Independent Living is committing forty-six thousand, sixty-three dollars to that project themselves. Okay? The next applicant is West Branch Regional Authority. This is for the Muncie Montgomery Sewer lateral work. This would be a phase two of that work. There is already work being done on the sewer laterals there for income-qualified homeowners. The project cost would be a hundred sixty-two thousand dollars with a CDVG request of a hundred sixty-two thousand dollars as well. And again, that is income-qualified through intakes for that one. Okay? The next two applicants, both projects were submitted by Albright Life, Lycoming. The first one is the HVAC replacement. It has a project cost of thirty-five thousand, one hundred dollars, a CDVG request of twenty-one thousand, one hundred sixty-six dollars. And this is to replace the outdated HVAC system at Life, Lycoming, which does serve multiple counties, so the fair share does apply again at the fifty-one point nine eight percent. Since they serve seventy people, of those seventy people, seventy-seven point one percent of them are Lycoming County residents, so both of those percentages are reflected in the CDVG requested amount, the twenty-one thousand, one hundred sixty-six. Life, Lycoming is also directly contributing twenty-one thousand, thirty-three dollars to that project, so they have some money allocated for that as well. The second one from Albright Life, Lycoming, is for the exterior walls. There's been some water damage there. The project cost is a hundred seventy-eight thousand, two hundred sixty-two dollars. Originally, the CDVG request I had listed on your paper was seventy-one thousand, four hundred forty-one dollars. There's a slight change in that due to environmental review fees and compliance fees, so that actually needs to reflect seventy-eight thousand, five hundred forty-one dollars for that request for CDVG funds. This is a project to install new wall covering along the entire exterior of the building, also sealing windows and doors to prevent further damage from the water. This, they, of course, serve multiple counties, so fair share applies with the fifty-one point nine eight percent, as well as the seventy-seven point one percent of Lycoming County residents being the beneficiary of those. That is reflected, again, in the CDVG request, and they are directly contributing one hundred six thousand, eight hundred twenty-one dollars. This project for the exterior walls is the priority project of the two that were submitted by Life, Lycoming. The final applicant is Montgomery Water Authority. They submitted a project proposal for the water main replacement on Wagner Avenue. They have since contacted me and asked to change that project area from Wagner Avenue to Broad Street. The estimate is about the same, so we're keeping that project cost around two hundred seventy-six thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars, with a CDVG request of two hundred eighty thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars, which includes the environmental review fee. Montgomery Water Authority has, we have worked with them before, and they have done some things through force account on their own, so compliance fees don't always apply to that. We would have to qualify that area through a survey to see if it would meet one of the national objectives, being the LMI. So we are in contact with them, since they changed the project area to get that service area and find out what survey we would need to do to get that project qualified. They are resubmitting and keeping us updated with the information for that. And those are the seven projects that we have there. If anybody has any questions or comments?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Maya. Quarter P.
Morning, Maya.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Matt. I'm acknowledging that the county board will be requesting proposals for professional construction-based engineering services as it relates to the levy project.
Thank you.
All right, personnel actions. Jessica.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Director. Seeking your approval on the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment subject to the successful completion of a background check and other employment conditions as outlined in attachment A. For adult probation, Brianna Wright hired as an APO officer two, full-time replacement at twenty-three eighty-two per hour, anticipated to start on September twenty-sixth. For budget and finance, Emily Snyder hired as an accountant one, full-time replacement at forty-seven thousand, seven ninety-four fifty per year, anticipated to start on August fourteenth. For consolidated services, Hannah Uber hired as a clerk three, mailroom, full-time replacement at fourteen seventy-three per hour, anticipated to start on August the seventh. Also for consolidated services, Ariana Fox hired as a retention, records retention coordinator, full-time replacement at sixteen seventy per hour, anticipated to start on August seventh. For DPS, Samantha Gordner hired, or, excuse me, transferring into a part-time telecommunicator two position. This position will not exceed a thousand hours in a year, and the position is a lateral transfer for her at twenty-two, twenty-nine per hour. The transfer is anticipated to happen on August sixth. For EMA, Emmeline Gillen is hired, or was hired, as a part-time EMA clerk. It's a replacement position, not to exceed a thousand hours in a year, and her pay rate is fourteen forty-four per hour. She's anticipated to start on July thirty-first. Also for EMA, Stacy Folk hired as a emergency management specialist for planning, full-time replacement. The salary is forty-one thousand, two hundred and three dollars and fifty cents per year, anticipated to start on July thirty-first. For facilities management, Heather Height hired as a custodial worker, full-time replacement, hired at fourteen oh eight per hour, anticipated to start on July thirty-first. The next line for Brandon Hall, that position, or, excuse me, that candidate is no longer starting. For the prison, Ellen Oaks LPN, full-time replacement, hired at thirty dollars per hour, anticipated to start on August fourteenth. For RMS, Cheryl D. Hernardo hired as a recycling laborer, full-time replacement, at fourteen fifty per hour, anticipated to start on July thirty-first. And then for Veterans Affairs, Jeff Hamilton is transferring into the Veteran Affairs Assistant position. This is a full-time replacement, twenty ninety-seven per hour is his rate, and he will transfer on August sixth.
So Jessica, it's my understanding that all these positions are being brought before us, with the exception of Brandon Hall is no longer a candidate?
Correct.
Okay. So I have a motion, except the personal actions with the exception of Brandon Hall?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
I do.
Okay.
So, in most of our hirings, we hire people within a couple of weeks. In our very first one, I put adult probation, their starting time is September twenty-sixth. For our constituents that had a question maybe a month or two ago, we also had somebody ask that was going to start months later.
Okay.
Could you explain why we?
I am not sure about this particular candidate, other than they might have some, I'm not sure, vacation, another job. I'm not sure of the particular reason. I can, I can find out and share with you once I find out.
I suspect that since she's being hired as an APO officer.
Two, she's currently working.
She's already a probation officer somewhere else, so it's probably had to give leave notice and all that.
Okay, let's just.
At this time of year, sometimes there's vacations that people have, and we'll try to start them after the vacations. There could be another position that they have that they're, you know, finishing out or something like that. In some cases, it works best for our schedule with, you know, making sure that whoever they're going to train with or retiring or something like that. So there's many reasons why somebody might not start immediately. It doesn't happen too often. Every now and then it does, though.
And this comes to us from the courts, which is a separate branch of government?
Correct, yeah.
And, you know, when they recommend someone hiring, unless there's a substantial reason why we wouldn't go along a recommendation, we usually follow what the courts ask, because they have their sixteen, twenty rights, plus they are a separate branch of government.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Are you going to have a motion?
I move to approve.
I think I, I think I missed.
Oh, you didn't make it to the second? All fair, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to action items, five point one.
Can we, can we jump ahead here just a second, Director? Because Commissioner Mayor Vito's going to be with us a short time, and he has asked for us to move ahead.
He may be in the chair already.
Yeah, could be.
I'm going up in the night. I'm going up in the night.
It's not as bad as you think. I had one done two weeks ago. Okay, Commissioner, you're not going to get sympathy out of this crowd.
So you want to jump to that?
Okay? But they aren't fun. They are not fun.
Yeah.
All right, Maya, five point four, agreement of sale.
All right, before you today, I vote to, recommending that you vote to approve agreement of sale with Horizon Federal Credit Union. It's an amount of three million, six hundred twenty thousand dollars. This is something that's taken place over the course of several months, as we've worked to negotiate the terms and conditions as part of our bid process for the sale of Executive Plaza.
Okay, this is something that was kicked around for years about whether this building was going to be sold, wasn't going to be sold, or were going to keep it, whether we were going to sell it. And this board of commissioners has moved ahead to sell it, and we are very thankful that not only are we selling it, but we're selling it at a substantial.
Very good price.
Very good price, at three point six two million dollars, which is one point three five million over the asking price. And at the same time, it's bringing a hundred corporate jobs to downtown Williamsport. So it's a win-win for the community, it's a win-win for the taxpayer, and it's a win-win for everybody involved. And we want to thank Horizon Federal Credit for having interest in the building, having faith in the county. And we will be out of our building by December thirty-first, guaranteed. We will move, we will move. So we'll get this done. We have our architectural plans to go across the street, and we're moving forward on that. Ken George is with us today, and Ken, we want to thank you for the sheriff's build-out. You know, just to change subjects quickly, something that wasn't supposed to be done until next spring is now open, as of Tuesday. And that's due to the hard work of your staff and the great quality workmanship. If you walk in the sheriff's office now, it's beautiful, and it's something that hasn't been updated in fifty years. And we want to thank you and your staff, and we look forward to moving across the street and downsizing, putting everything in one building, and then having Sherwell move over with us to save money, so.
We actually have a meeting on Monday, you'll see, to discuss, you know, plans and, you know, the times, where we're at with things.
But we can't thank Horizon Federal Credit enough, and it's exciting that they're bringing a hundred corporate jobs here to downtown Williamsport, which is going to be great for the economy.
You know, they say the government moves very slow, and that was one of my campaign commitments, is to sell excess property. Took twelve years to sell one of the other. Well, but we did it. That's, that's great.
So any other comments? Commissioner, you're not under yet, are you?
Yeah, I just would echo that it's really a great opportunity for the revitalization of downtown and all these jobs coming in. I mean, thanks Horizon for doing that, and, and actually, all the half-elected officials and local shopkeepers who have kept the downtown alive. You know, fifteen years ago, the downtown many had thought would never resurrected though. So to see this happen after the work of so many people who've come before us is really good news. So anyway, we're just very excited about the sale, and we thank Horizon for doing that.
And I will add this comment, is that, you know, we got a very good price for it, but as Ken will testify, that this is one of our most efficient buildings in the county, right? Well, well-built. And if they were to go out and build a building like this.
Much more expensive, yeah.
Eight, eight million dollars, you know? So they recognize the, and it's a testimony to Ken and his staff, because they're always here. They're fixing things immediately, and it was a job well-done, Ken.
And I think with the fact that Horizon's going to be in downtown Williamsport, it will bring even more businesses to downtown Williamsport, so it's going to help the overall area. So again, thank you, and we look forward to having you be our neighbor. So I have a motion.
I'll move to first.
Well, I'll second that.
All fair, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you gonna lea, you gonna leave us?
No, it was cut off. I went inside, and somehow they screwed up the schedule. And they snapped me on the schedule.
Did they screw up the schedule, or did you screw it up?
I don't know what they did. It was the only day they could do it, so. I will stay on, and I'm riding it.
So you're staying there?
I'm leaving.
Oh, okay, you're with us. Well.
Well.
I had to wait an hour and a half, so you're going to wait longer.
Yeah, I know.
I have a pair of pliers if you need some.
Okay. I bet you luck to yank that out.
Okay.
All right, back to five point one, Jessica.
I also wanted to share that candidate is from out of state, so they are moving here, which is the reason for the delayed start date.
Okay, very, thank you, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. So seeking your approval on the amendment to all group health plan and participants. So this is regarding the removal of the requirement for us to provide COVID-nineteen tests within our plan. Due to the pandemic ending, that is no longer a requirement of the plan.
Okay, a motion?
I move to approve.
I'll second you.
All fair, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jess.
All right, five point two, Commissioner, seeking your approval to purchase network equipment in support for the prison sheriff's office and Third Street Plaza. And so I just need to clarify that the amount is for a hundred and five thousand, a hundred and forty-three dollars and thirteen cents. And on the agenda, it states that the non-budgeted items but funds are available. And so, really, that's not a hundred percent accurate, forty-three thousand, three hundred is unbudgeted, and that's for six switches for the move to Third Street Plaza. There is forty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twelve cents. That's budgeted, and that is from the prison for their upgrade. And then there are two additional switches. For roughly thirteen thousand dollars, and that's for the sub-level one upgrades for the sheriff's department once we get downstairs.
So they're not budgeted, so the funds are available? Where are the funds coming from?
There was a transfer down for the prison, so they did have a portion, but they didn't have all of it. But they transferred, they had enough funds available.
Other monies in their budget.
More importantly, why, why are we doing it is because the move, correct?
Well, part of it's the move.
Right, which was not.
Right.
Right. We sold the building, and now we're moving.
Right.
And the sheriff's building was budgeted for as part of their overall build.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
It takes some time to build the switches, it's not like they just plug it in and they go.
And these, which we, these are switches that we're going to be able to use afterwards, from what I understand, right?
We're going to use these switches as the primary, and then the ones that are in here, we can take out and have as backup in other projects.
Right. Okay.
Okay, a motion?
I move.
I'll second.
All fair, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Five point three, Maya.
Good morning again.
Morning.
On to five point three, it's vote to approve Act thirteen agreement with Lycoming Water and Sewer Authority. It's an amount of thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars as it relates to as it relates to the Mifflin Manor Sewer System project. And I believe Christine, if you wanted to come up and discuss a little bit of the project, you're welcome to do so.
Right, Christine.
Thank you, Maya, good morning, Commissioners. Uh, we appreciate the consideration of the Act thirteen agreement for thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for the Mifflin Manor sewage treatment tank repair and rehabilitation project. We estimate that project to be around forty-five thousand dollars. Uh, we were fortunate, we had a request to Mifflin Township, and Mifflin Township has provided twelve thousand dollars of their Act thirteen money in addition to your consideration. So that project, project will be funded through the Mifflin Township Act thirteen, the county Act thirteen, if you vote favorably today, and the user fees of the Mifflin Manor Sewer System. The Mifflin Manor system is, um, mid nineteen seventies infrastructure with no investment by the prior private owner. Um, that system became our system, and we've been working systematically and methodically to make investments to that system. The user fees right now are one hundred and forty-five dollars a month for sewer only. Those users also have a Jersey Shore water bill. So any amount of money that we can bring forth to assist with this project, given that there are other infrastructure needs of the sewer system as well, we would greatly appreciate it. So thank you for your consideration this morning. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll move to, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, so carried.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
I want to make a comment. And you all, we find a lot of funds to the Act thirteen. Okay, that's the gas impact fee. And in Pennsylvania, that fee is somewhere right around two percent, it's probably the lowest in the nation. And I remember when Commissioner Mayor Vito came on board and, um, he was talking about severance taxes. And I, 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 I went with the superintendent up to Tioga yesterday, and we had a long conversation about funding and a, a number of issues, you know? School safety, active shooters. And we have so many needs as counties. And those Act thirteen funds, as nice as they are, and what we use them for, and how we allocate those funds for major projects, okay? We try to leverage those funds, they're going to run out. Okay, they are going to run out. And we get an average of about a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in the life of, of that act. So fifteen years, in the last five years of each well, you get about ten thousand dollars. Okay? It wasn't based off of, of a, uh, it wasn't based off production. It was just based off the impact over a fifteen-year period. So it's very attractive. I'm hoping that someday we, we wake up, the legislature wakes up, says, you know, this is Pennsylvania gas that's going to be exported. That is, you know, we do have the impact here. There is always an impact when you're extracting, uh, energy. But this is something that is being transported overseas, it's all over the place, other states. And this cost could be past arn. And when you look at the, just the trillions of cubic feet of this natural gas, that passing our noses is, is pennies. And we're losing opportunities here in Pennsylvania to, to receive more money to help us with these infrastructure needs, our school district needs. It's, we need to, we need to reevaluate it, and I hope they do so.
Those are, those are well-spoken comments. Because it is, it is going to be a shock to all the counties that, uh, that get it when it starts to dry up.
The country controls things by the food source and by the energy source. And we're giving away both of them. We're neglecting our American farmer, and we're neglecting our energy, and, um, it's a shame. Okay, moving on.
Um, the last sign, the last sign I have for you is vote to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty twenty-three. Let me do that again, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four State Food Purchase Program Plan Operation in Agreement. And if you recall, this program provides financial assistance to counties for the purchase and distribution of food on to low-income individuals. And the funding is provided to support emergency food distribution programs such as food pantry, soup, soup kitchens and shelters. We've had the privilege for several years working with Central PA Food Bank to help administer this program on the county's behalf. And I believe we have some representation from Central PA Food Bank. Um, I don't know if you want to come up and just give an overview of what you've done over the past last fiscal year?
Good morning.
Good morning, thank you for having us. I am Tracy Hawes Ungard, I am the Agency Services Manager for the Central PA Food Bank. I actually oversee the State Food Purchase Program. So a few highlights about, the really lowlights, about food insecurity right now. We are operating at three percent below where we were at the peak of the pandemic in twenty twenty-one. Part of this is due to the discontinuation of the emergency allotments for the SNAP program, which has also increased our demand for food assistance by fifteen percent in our twenty-seven county footprint. In addition, families in our service territory are spending, on average, five hundred and three dollars more per month for their expenses, including ten point four percent more for food, as well as forty-one point five percent more for fuel. So my comments are very timely considering the ones we just discussed. Hunger remains a crisis, it's just a lot quieter right now. And all of the resources that were coming in during COVID, bonus products, products from trade mitigation, are gone. And we're finding it even harder to source donated food and, um, you know, get low-cost proteins, things like that, because a lot of, a lot of that food is leaving our nation. So, uh, just an overview of twenty twenty-two, the food bank as a whole, we provided nearly forty-seven million meals. We distributed more than thirteen million pounds of produce, and we delivered more than five million servings of milk. In addition to our food part, food pantry partners, we reach those in need through youth programs, elder share, military share, Fresh Express Mobile distributions, healthcare partnerships, as well as the agriculture community. So in Lake Homing County, there are eleven agencies that were approved to receive funding for the State Food Purchase Program. They are American Rescue Workers, Antioch Baptist Church, Footprints of Montgomery, the New Love Center, Salvation Army Williamsport, Sunlight House, United Church's Food Pantry, West End Christian Community Center, West End Food Pantry, Sojourner Truth Ministries, and the Diamond Street Christian Church Food Pantry. And those are combinations of shelter, soup kitchens, or pantries. And then statistics related specifically to the State Food Program. There were twelve programs in the past year. Uh, one did close due to health reasons for that partner, and it has been replaced with another partner. They distributed as a total two hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven pounds of food last year. The inventory valued by KMPG at one dollar, ninety-two cents per pound was equal to approximately five hundred twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred, three dollars and four cents on the wholesale market. Now, the total budget for Lake Homing County SFPP is right around a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. So you can see where that additional value comes from. And then one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three families were served per month, and that is a duplicated number with those funds. The soup kitchen and shelter program served approximately three thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight meals per month with the funds. The foods to encourage, which is, um, produce, healthy proteins, milk, et cetera, that percentage was sixty-five percent. And then we actually have a total of sixty-seven partners in Lake Homing County that distributed just about three point four million pounds of food last year. So that is our impact in not such a nutshell. Questions?
No, thank you, thank you for what you do, and all the food pantries, the love center, all of them. You know, no one in this nation should go hungry. I remember growing up as a kid, my mom and dad grew up in the depression. And my mom shared with me one time when she was a little girl, you know, a gentleman knocking on her door during the depression looking for bread. You know, and that made a major impact on me. You know, last night we're sitting at the dinner table, and my twenty-one-year-old son's complaining about the ham loaf. You know, what's ham loaf? And I said, be thankful it's on the table.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You know, it could be, any one of us could be in the same situation where we don't have food.
Absolutely.
So I want to thank, we received an email from, uh, Emily up at Central Pennsylvania Food Bank, and I just want to share this, on Thursday, August tenth, from ten to eleven, they're going to recognize Landa Lakes.
Mm-hmm.
Who's donated forty thousand pounds of frozen macaroni and cheese to the Central Pennsylvania, Central Pennsylvania Food Bank, Oahu Drive. This generous donation will provide meals to more than thirty-one thousand neighbors in need. It's only the most recent donation by Landa Lakes. They have a manufacturing facility in New York. They have donated nearly three hundred and eighteen thousand pounds of food for a dollar value of nearly nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. In addition, they've made contributions totaling about three hundred and ninety-five thousand over the years, which brings their total commitment to the food bank of one point three, two million dollars. So we can't thank them enough for what they're doing in our area. And, um, you know, they're always looking for volunteers up there.
Absolutely. We welcome you all to stop in for a tour, to volunteer, Hunger Action Month is in September. So there's always, there's always something to be done, really in all nonprofits, but especially with food insecurity, especially with this economy right now.
If you have a group of young, young athletes or Cub Scouts, I know the mental sports basketball team's called there for years, and it opens their eyes.
Absolutely.
Opens up the youth's eyes to, you know, there's hunger, you know, there's food deficiencies in our own area.
Absolutely.
And, uh, and to get them interested in helping. So thank you for what you do and your staff, and.
You're welcome, and I will pass that along. Thank you, and as quickly as those pounds come in from Landa Lakes that we are so thankful for, they will go right back out that quickly. So we are, we are very fortunate. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve. A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carried.
Okay, five point six and five point seven, Nancy Stone Line.
I am still here, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh, due to an probation, is asking for you to approve our contract with GeoGroup for our electronic monitoring for our juvenile.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve. A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
And then five point seven, we are asking for your approval for our detention center, uh, Central County Youth Center. And fortunately, there is no rate increase this year, it's based at three hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Good news. Okay.
How often do we use that, Nancy?
Um, often, but not too often, and we're really slowed down on our detention placement.
Yeah.
Looking to see here, I don't think we have anybody there right now. I don't think we do.
Okay.
Okay, got a motion?
I'll move to approve. A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Thank you, Commissioners, have a good day.
You too, thank you.
All right, five point eight, uh, Ken, agreement with air management?
Good morning, Commissioner. This is a, um, agreement with, um, air management to install a, um, HVAC system in the eastern half of the basement of Third Street Plaza.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for the great job your team did on the sheriff's build out.
Thank you all.
Really looks nice.
Next, Ken.
Jason, five point nine.
Good morning, Jason, good morning, Commissioners, good morning, Director. Uh, Commissioners, five point nine is to approve the purchase and replacement Leach Eight loading pump on the amount of thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. Uh, while this will be on the twenty twenty-four budgeted item, due to the, um, lead time to get it in, it'll be twenty-six to thirty weeks, uh, we're requesting purchase. This pump is a vital piece that will move Leach Eight from pond to pond, and, uh, right now, the backup one is helping load our trucks as we send trucks of leach into sewer plants in the area to get caught up, so.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 We're all going, we're all going to have dreams about Leach Eight. Swimming out from it, overcoming us, drowning in it. We hold a lot of Leach Eight, right?
Yes, sir.
Five point ten, Eric.
Good morning, everybody. Um, this is a request to, for a master service agreement with Rapid Financial Solutions, uh, otherwise known as Court Funds, to improve our process for paying jurors and those poll workers. They will take over the payment of them, and they, and they can do it in debit cards, PayPal. They could issue a check if needed. Month-to-month contract, cost is minimal, several thousand dollars, uh, unestimate of per year. Saves us substantial amount of time in trying to process checks, chase down unpaid checks.
Reconcile checks.
It's a win.
Everything, it's, it's moving from paper to an electronic system.
Exactly.
And expediating, pay to the poll workers and.
We pay the days rather than weeks.
Right. And the jury's much, much quicker. Okay, we want to thank you and, and, uh, everybody in the team, the Controller for bringing this to us, and, and everybody for getting on board with this, uh, the fans job. Yeah, and will save substantial time for your, for your department alone.
Yeah, it was a great example of cooperation between the Controller, the Budget and Finance Office, Treasurer, everybody, all of them working together, cut the time for people to get paid. So we thank them for that, thank all of you.
I motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, comment?
Yeah, yes, yesterday, uh, I had the opportunity to go up to Tioga County and listen to, uh, a gentleman, uh, who was an authority on active shooting in, in the schools. And went over some amazing statistics, and he saw a lot of things in, you know, I want to see and heard a lot of, a lot of tapes. And, uh, I brought the, uh, South Williamsport School Superintendent Eric Briggs with me. Just to give you a real quick briefing of the meeting was, uh, the average length of an active shooter incident is about one point nine million, I mean, one point nine minutes. That's how long the average is to go in there and do the damage. The average response for the police to come is, is nine minutes. So they, this gentleman is not talking about anything but prevention, and how do you stop this? How do you alert people immediately? And so there is technology out there that can do that. And the amazing thing is forty, I think it was forty-one or forty-nine percent of the shootings start out in the parking lot. If one hundred percent is one person. 100 percent is one person. 100 percent of the shootings by one person. And so they, they talk about if you could have five minutes back, because it takes time to call 911, it takes time for anybody even to think that it's happening. Even though they can hear, they, they just, they don't see it. And it talks about the mental health. These people aren't mentally ill. But 100 percent of the people that shoot advertised it. They did it on Facebook, they did it on social media, they advertised it, and we didn't listen to them. So there's technology out there, and I, and I'm bringing this up because I will, will bring this up to the Commissioners, and we'll have a, a meeting with the school superintendents that whether their cameras have recognized, 99.9 percent of these cameras recognize the gun. And, and it'll send the alert immediately, right out, because these people are coming in with weapons, you know, not just handguns. And they have to be drawn as well. And it sends out the alerts right into the schools, into the teachers, and so it identifies where they are, and then the actions to, to take. And this gentleman, he's the one that came up with the run, hide, and fight. And there's many, you know, the Alice programs, and, and there's many things that are out there to do when you're in that situation. But he said, I'm the one that started that, and I feel guilty that it doesn't always work. It won't always work, and a matter of fact, the odds of it working is not good. So he's gotten involved on understanding how to prevent the incidents from happening. So the technology, just a simple one, that they, they try to bring them all together because they're different organizations, but it's a, a simple ballistic door. It's, it's one that's put on a, a cart, okay? It's a full-length door, and the teacher, once notified, can move that right to the door of the classroom, and it sets up, and it protects the students. They can't go through it, because most of the times, these active shooters will shoot that door right through the jam, shoot the locks, easy. So I would, I'm looking forward to sharing that information with the public as well as the school districts, to see if there's any, anything that we can do to protect our children. And, yeah, it was, it was eye-opening, it was very sad. This, this man happened to be one of the police officers in one of the shootings. And, you know, when they talk, you know, it's, it's a tough subject to talk about, but when they're called to duty, they're not there to save, they're not there to save the people that got shot, and they're walking over them. And some of them are not dead, but their job is to get the shooter. And so the prevention is just, it's, it can save a lot of lives. And the one Commissioner, Doug McLenco, said, we hope it's the biggest waste of money we've ever spent. So I'll bring this to the public and the Commissioners here shortly, and we'll see where we go from there.
The most important thing is to prepare, don't ever think it won't happen in your backyard.
They said.
Because it can't. It happened at one of the local schools back in the 90s, where we had an active shooter. And fortunately, no one was killed that day, one student shot. But we don't want to ever have that in our community. And so much of it is preparation. You think back to Columbine, they told those kids to hide under the desk. You know, you think, you know, 25 years later, how much further we are with Alice training and the different types of training, the technology, you know, the fact that a camera can pick up a gun in the parking lot. And a lot of it is awareness, it's awareness, you see something on Facebook, report it. You drive by a school and somebody's walking through a parking lot with a gun, don't keep driving, you know?
And they set this ballistic so that it's like a, an easel board, so you can have messages on it so that the kids aren't, aren't, you know, concerned about school colors, and it is fast, I mean, they can set it up in seconds, so.
So it's a door? Did you say it's a ballistic?
It's a, it's a ballistic shield.
Oh, it's ballistic shield, okay.
So we've covered the door, and it's on a cart, so when you bring it to it, you step on it and it raises the, or it lowers, raises the cart wheels up and drops the door. It, it can do it in seconds, it doesn't take long to secure that entry.
And Commissioners, I'd be willing to sit in, I know there's actually money, PCCD offers it strictly for violence in schools, there's monies that come out every year, I share it with the superintendents, but if I can be of assistance, running a grant from a regional approach to get the monies, I would certainly be more than willing to do that.
Yeah, we will be talking to you about that.
And it starts with the students, you know, the students recognizing their certain things, you know, seeing things on social media and reporting it to their, you know, to their teachers, reports to their parents, friend, or counselor, whoever's saying, hey, something's not right. And, and also befriending someone who's being bullied, you know? Because that person might not act out and shoot somebody, but they might take their own life, which is another tragedy. And so, so much of the bullying that goes on can be prevented by students saying, listen, this is nonsense, knock it off, and, and let the person walk and befriend him.
So I had the opportunity yesterday to go to the 25th anniversary of the Treatment Court, which in 1998 Judge Buds initiated with other judges, and she's been involved with it for about 25 years, probably the longest of any judge in the state. And there were many partners there who worked with the courts, the adult probation, West Branch, Crossroads, Genesis House, the district attorney, and a lot of people, a lot of people. And, and it was very inspirational in the sense that you saw people whose lives had literally been saved by being able to deal with the addiction and the other issues they have through Treatment Court. And they, they spoke about that, and they spoke about, about the difficulty. I think it is about the disease of addiction, and I, I think it's hard if you don't suffer with a disease to sometimes understand, whether it's addiction or whether it's cancer or diabetes. I mean, you can have sort of one level of understanding about it and, and express empathy, but to hear the struggle where, for example, a woman who's an alcoholic spoke about all she thought about. All she thought about was drinking. All she thought about was, you know, hiding bottles in the house, getting up in the morning, finding the bottle, drinking it, and then, you know, hating herself afterwards and, but continuing the cycle. So it, it's great. I think one of the things that struck me also is that, you know, back when Treatment Court was started in 1998, it wasn't as, how should I say? Today, it's very accepted to believe that we have treatment for people. You know, back in the 80s and the 90s, the attitude was lock them up and throw away the key. What also struck me sort of from a practical perspective is that in a community that desperately needs people to work and populate and live here, there are a lot of people yesterday who are working, populating, and living here. In other words, people who are living and have overcome their, the demon and the disease of addiction and who are continuing. So, so I know that this Board of Commissioners, other Boards of Commissioners have been very supportive, I'm hoping that in the future they'll continue to be. Obviously, the courts have put their heart and soul into it, Judge Buds and all the folks in the community, West Branch, as I mentioned. So it's, it's very, it's very inspirational in many ways. And I guess one of the things that I think all of us need to remember is that, and Judge Buds pointed this out, that, you know, she's, she's getting older, all of us are getting older.
And she's my age, watch her.
And there needs to be an understanding among younger people about how they can make an impact to try to help deal with this situation. I think what's amazing is when I think sometimes back to like the 1940s and the 50s, and of course I wasn't around in the 40s, but you think about how things have changed so much, it was not uncommon to just drink and drive, right? And all sorts of changes. So anyway, that was, that was good, and Representative Flick was there with a citation, and it was a nice, a nice event. It's down at the South Williamsport Park.
So Wednesday, we met with the Airport Authority.
Yes.
And it's, it's critical that the people in this area reach out to Senator Casey and Senator Fetterman's office. You know, I, I brought the question that the TSA equipment is now being talked about, being pulled out. And they already took the agents out, I think it was last October, and now they're talking about taking the equipment out by the end of the year. And it's hard to get things back once they're gone, as we saw with the EAS, and emerged the Air Service. And Congressman Minister's trying to do the best he can do to get that back to us. So it's critical that, that you reach out to Senator Casey and Senator Fetterman's office because we need air service in rural Pennsylvania. And it's, other airports are suffering, ours is one of the ones that's suffering, but there's many other ones that are suffering. And the, the Airport Authority said, the more people that reach out to these senators, whether it be by phone or by, by letter, it makes an impact. They're trying to do what they can do, but they have to understand that we need to pressure them.
You know, and in that regard, I, I was at the Marcellus Shale Coalition Meeting on Tuesday, and I went to speak to Dave Callahan, who's the Executive Director, and I asked him to have the trade association, the gas trade association, contact both the senators and congressmen. And it occurred to me as I was leaving the meeting that I was going to call Jason and think about this. We need to get trade associations, the hospital association, the medical association, all the different organizations that have lobbyists in Harrisburg and in Washington, to get on the fact that this affects the ability to engage in commerce, right? You know, Jason mentioned at that meeting how it's difficult for some of the workers to get here, when, when they're, you know, working in, on the gas industry in Louisiana or in Texas, and they need to come up. And I know Commissioner Muster has intimate knowledge, that sometimes they end up just driving, right? They drive that, they make that trip driving. But there are impacts in healthcare, especially with the hospital needing to bring in doctors or specialists. So it goes beyond tourism, and I'm, I'm not sure we've tapped into the associations, the trade associations, but hopefully we can get the word out on that, and maybe see if CCAP can help us also.
One of the most frustrating things we face as Commissioners is that when we go to Washington DC or we go to Harrisburg, who do we go see? We, we see our own representatives. We know we have their support. We don't have the ability to get, you know, scheduled into somebody else's department, another representative. And that's frustrating because if they don't know our story, and, and trust me, there's huge differences between living in a metropolitan area and a rural area. And we wouldn't understand their dilemmas, and nor do they understand ours. And I called up the Chairman of the Republican Party today, I asked him, and I'm going to ask you to tell, call your chairman up, that all the chairmen of the 67 counties, let's get the bullet points together so that they can lobby, both parties can lobby our legislators. And, you know, the sad thing is, we never needed the government subsidy. I understand some of our representatives saying, tired of spending money, we, we gotta cut the budget. I get that. But there's so many things that are wasted, right? But our issue wasn't about accepting government money, we didn't need it, okay? We, we didn't use it. And, and we would probably subsidize it ourselves, because we know that the risk is very low, that our airport always had enough to, to pay its bills. If it's not the EAS, then let it be a new piece of legislation, right? I mean, let them, whether they say, well, these are the cities that we're going to force airlines to fly out of, but we, we're not asking for subsidies. We need to do something, because it, it does hurt when you talk about the businesses that are, you know, they, they go to State College or somewhere else, and they have to be bused here or drive there, it's sad. We, we, our airport should have a service.
So this is where I think we, you know, we're sort of in this pickle because in 1978, with the mantra of deregulation, we, we basically gave the airlines the ability to not have to service every airport. So a lot of times, we have to think about the collateral damage that happens. And the truth be told is that there's no airline, the major airlines, American, United, Delta, they wouldn't exist without the public subsidy to the airports. What are they gonna do? How are they gonna fly, how are they gonna land their planes without public subsidies to Newark, Dulles, all of these places? So philosophically, it isn't necessarily wrong to tell them they have to service every community. They get public money to run their business nationally and internationally. And the quid pro quo for that should be that they have an obligation to the people, all the people of the country, not just the places where they can make money.
But they mentioned on Wednesday about how those bigger airlines own the smaller airlines, and now they don't own them anymore because they're more profitable, so they've discarded them.
Right, they want to get out of it.
Right, you know, I'd have to admit, I was critical of the board, and, and after listening to that meeting yesterday, and, and they are doing a, a great job. It's not easy in their, in their position, but they understand the problems that face our communities with the airport, and, and they have a very good strategy in moving forward. I don't envy them, and I want to thank them for their service.
You know, you, you think about this, if the interstate highway that, that had been constructed, right, since the 1940s and 50s had been totally privatized, we might not have 180 coming through. I mean, it took us years to get 180, but we, we would, we would travel on local roads down to 80, and you would pay your toll, and, right? So there's, there's a balance between saying that we're gonna, you know, total privatization is gonna solve everything. It's not that we want to tell companies how to run things, but this is really causing a serious problem for rural America.
Part of our infrastructure.
Yeah, it's part of our infrastructure, that's right. So hopefully constituents will call, as Commissioner Muster noted, Casey and Fetterman.
Okay, public comment? And if you please keep it to county items. Where are you, Tom?
Commissioners, Tom Adams, Williamsport. I guess along the, along the same lines with the airport and our, just how people in governing authority and positions have one of two worldviews. I read the Bible series from Genesis 1 to 11 is a foundation for understanding why we care about humanity. for understanding why we care about humanity, because people are the most precious commodity of any country, of any county. If you're thou people, what do you have? And that's why we want to protect life, want to protect and have a decent and moral society, because when you have secularism come in, it says, there is no God, and we weren't created by a God. We're just here, and we don't know where we're going, where we came from, where we're going. What does that give you? It gives you, that's actually a religion. It's a foundation for religion. It's a foundation for communism, totalitarianism. So the real battle is between two worldviews. So for instance, we have with this airport, it's shut down because they don't care about people. The people in charge that have the real authority or the real power to do things, they don't care about us. They care about governing people by ignoring our fists, and that's what's coming on top of us, because we turn our backs from the foundations of our country, foundations of freedom and prosperity, is foundation from the Bible, and especially the first eleven chapters of the Bible. There are Christians that don't believe that, so their foundation is skewed, and they'll accept anything. Now, I'm not about hating people. I think, you know, the Bible teaches us, we need to deal with murderers. We need to deal with rapists, and people have lifestyles that might not be right in God's view. The idea is to hate them. We, our feelings go out to them. We want to help them. But we have to draw a line somewhere. When we're overtaken by this type of ideology, this is what we get. They don't care about us, and we're left to fight for ourselves now. And hopefully, we can get people back in with authority and let them, we're the ones that are in authority, give them the message. They have to answer to God eventually. It's, the Bible teaches that clean and clear. And there is anyone in governing authority, or is a higher position as any pastor. That's how God looks at it. It's how serious the Bible's about law and order.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Anyone online?
No.
Okay. We have concluded our meeting, so we will be adjourned, and our next meeting will be next Thursday at 10:00 AM. Thank you, everyone.
How are you?